I had a birthday.
Call order, the city council work session for East Grand Forks, Tuesday, August 28th. It's now five o'clock. City clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Mike Pachivinsky.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Henry Twetton.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn and quorum. Number one, review of 2015 assessment job number two, 115th and sixth paving. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think as you're all aware, well aware, while we were working on plans and specs for this project, there was a lot of, I guess, contention. So, prior to awarding the project, we did hold the final assessment hearing, and then basically did move ahead with the project. At the time when we, when the council adopted the assessment roll, back, oh, gosh, back at the end of July here, our estimated construction costs, we were at about, shoot, I'm sorry, I didn't have that part of the packet. We were at about $255,000. Final construction cost came in a little over $256,000, so roughly about $1,000 more. However, we did have, in the role that was adopted back in August, we had about a 5% contingency, which we did not use any of that. So, overall, our total project cost came in approximately $11,500, cheaper than what was previously assessed. So, we revised the assessment role. Equates to probably about an average cost savings of $500 to $800 per parcel, just kind of depending on the size of your lot and stuff. So, just wanted to, I guess, bring it forward for discussion. I think Megan would have to, because the role never did get filed, so we would have to file the role, you know, basically this fall before the end of October, I believe it is. November.
Mr. Pachivinsky.
Thank you. Given the fact that this is below the estimate and the original assessments that the properties are having, and that we don't have to have another assessment hearing because of that, I recommend we move forward with it without a hearing.
Mark Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not to rip off any old scabs, but what was, what was the, the agreed upon subsidy for out there?
You talking about the $25,000?
Was it $25,000?
Yeah, it was $25,000.
I guess my recommendation, rather than paying this down, would be to pay the city back its subsidy first, since the, the amount was agreed upon as, as listed. I guess that would be to take that $11,000 off the $25,000 that we agreed to pay or subsidize those property taxes. I guess, I think it was a contentious enough agreement, and I think still giving $14,000 in property tax relief is, is pretty good. I guess this would just, if we just lower their assessments without, now we're, we're lowering their assessments and subsidizing it, which compounds that. So, I guess, I won't vote for anything that isn't paying the city back first. Thank you.
Mayor.
That number was arrived at, if you recall, by a formula. It was not just some random number that was made up, and it was to account for what would ultimately have been an end benefit back to Laurel Drive. And that number, just from memory, the total was closer to $42,000, and each of the members of the families of Laurel going halfway each way up the street voluntarily paid $3,000 toward that total, which brought it down to 25. So, that was by no means a random number. That was an actual number which was applied to what would have been the end benefit back to Laurel. And I would argue in favor of leaving that alone. It isn't a subsidy. It really is an offset for the fact that we couldn't put it on to Laurel. It wouldn't have been proper, and we couldn't put it on to the new development. That wouldn't have been proper. So, we arrived at it mathematically. It, it carried to that lineal feat of street, which would have been the end benefit, which, again, if we did the whole thing as a project, it would have carried as an end benefit back to Laurel, but we could not carry that full amount. And so, I feel that should stand, and that this assessment role, this revised 7/31/18 should be the, the final role. That's what I believe.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've talked about, and we're moving towards having final assessment roles before we ever award projects. So, is this a policy statement? Then we're going to do revised policy, revised assessment roles in the future every time costs go lower or higher after the project's done, then?
Well, typically, I mean, in the past, we have typically done the final assessment hearing after the project has been completed. We know the final project costs.
I understand, but we have had numerous discussions about doing that final assessment role prior to awarding the project, so that we don't get into arguments about people not wanting to pay the assessments, and now we're stuck with the costs.
Yep.
So, as we're moving forward and we come to that, is this a policy statement, then, that after all the costs come in, we're going to revise the assessment roles either up or down, then?
That will be ultimately your decision, but I think, long-term, I think that's the most fair way to do it.
Attorney's telling me off the sidebar here that we can't revise them up?
You can't revise them up.
You can revise them down, because revising them up, you would be over and above the amount that was agreed upon in the assessment role. So, you'd actually have to have another hearing.
You can revise it up if you held another hearing.
Yep.
That's correct.
So, the idea with the contingency is to not have to go up, but it could go down if you did not have to use the contingency. You didn't find any unexpected soils. You didn't have more curb to replace than expected, all that kind of stuff.
Correct. I was just making a comment that you can't.
Go higher.
Go higher.
With, with all doing your hearing.
Assessment hearing.
Mr. Murphy, did you have something to add?
Yeah, so, I was just going to reiterate that, that you can't, you can't go up, but you could go down. And that's part of the trade-off that I've seen with some of the cities, is that you, you can know upfront what you're, if you're going to have objections and appeals. And so, the offset on that is, is that if there's cost overruns, typically then the city ends up paying that. But you usually don't go out and, and hold another hearing and try to, try to recoup that. So, it's, it's more of a trade-off. You get to know whether you're going to be have appeals or not, but you also are bearing the risk of overruns.
Anybody else have any comments and questions?
I do have one, one question. And I'm kind of making a question that goes against my preferred point of view, but it's in the interest of not having to drag this out additionally. Would we want to prepare a final role, according to Mr. Demers's preference, to have it in our pocket for next Tuesday's meeting if this one is not passed?
The final role would just be the same final role. We just wouldn't, we wouldn't put in the extra money, wouldn't it?
So, it would mean?
Because we're not assessed in this, right? East Grand Forks isn't on the assessment role. We're just.
So, you'd want to have that ready, and someone would make a separate motion? Because we did not finalize, right? Do we, either way, do we have to do an action to finalize an assessment role?
No, actually, I believe we've already adopted a final assessment role on the, on last August.
But it just wasn't ever filed?
It just wasn't, it just wasn't filed at Polk County, but it was adopted. The resolution was adopted. So, what they're doing now is revising that downward to account for the money that, yeah, the savings.
So, there'd be, could be no, we don't have to vote next week on this.
So, so I don't think we would redo the assessment role. What you would adopt, then, would have just be the role that was completed last, last August or whatever?
Is this?
It would just, it wouldn't necessarily be adopted, in my opinion. It would just be submitted.
Filed.
Filed with, with the county. If you plan on doing what's in the resolution by revising it, then you're going to need to have a vote on it.
Correct.
And then, that amended resolution, then, will be filed at the county.
Is this not kind of our standard process that we go through when you get to the final construction? If it costs less than expected, that revises it downward. Is that not our normal way of doing it?
I guess the only way, it's probably not normal. I mean, our normal procedure is to do the final assessment role after the project's completed.
Okay.
You know, that, that's kind of been our normal procedure. This was a little abnormal, that we held the final hearing prior to awarding the project.
So, in that scenario, the owners of the properties would pay actual costs?
Correct.
Yeah.
And there would be no contingencies built in, because we would know what those final costs were.
The way it stands, just to review of this, there is no action that we need to take next week.
If, if you wanted, if you want to file it.
If we leave it the way it is.
Is it, yep.
And if we want to revise it, you'd bring a motion to make this the revised and final assessment role?
And I'll just remind, I mean, the reason why we did it this way was because we were under the threat of protest, because they said that they, it wasn't going to be, the costs were going to be insurmountable, basically.
But then the protest didn't materialize. They, they let the period end.
They gave them $25,000.
And there we went.
And I guess, to Clarence's point, I guess, one of the things I see, as we look at doing these type of projects, we know that the cost, or the, the ability to prove value equal to the, the improvement is becoming harder and harder to show. What I, I fear happening is that we're going to start doing these, but in order for the city to stay ahead of, or ahead and less exposed to risk, we're going to jack that contingency up to 10%.
No, no, no.
Because, because otherwise, we're going to be on the downside if something happens. If we're, otherwise, we're going to just be, we'll, we'll, we'll drive it down if, if you're, if it's lower, but if it's higher, we're just going to have to eat it. So, pretty soon, we're going to have to start saying, well, that's, because we're taking on that risk, we have to make that risk less by limiting that uncertainty, which is the contingency.
Keep in mind that with the updated development agreement, all of this is done before lots are sold. Okay? Keep that in mind. We're, the tail doesn't wag the dog anymore with our revised development agreement. This is done.
But this will happen on reconstructions, anything where there's assessments. I mean, we, we typically, in the past, if, like Mr. Emery said, is, we've typically in the past assessed on the back end, and now we've moved it to the front end, taking on that risk, like Mr. Murphy said. Now, if, if our policy's going to be, we'll revise it down after, to the benefit, like you said. That's how it kind of ends up on the back end, but we can't do it on the back end anymore, because all of a sudden, we're going to have a bunch of protests at the end, after project's done, and we're going to be holding the bag. If we do it in the front end, and it comes over 5%, we're going to be holding the bag. So, for the city's sake, we have to try to figure out, and I'm not saying it's going to happen overnight, but I can just see us going down that road, of having to move that contingency rate, which makes the, the front end of the project look more expensive.
Again, because this fell under our old development agreement, we got caught in between. But the new agreement, all of this will be accounted for before lots are sold. Now, that does not apply to the street replacement policy, which we don't really have one right now that works. That's going to be for this group to take up on another day for replacing, complete street replacement. We don't have a policy right now that, that would be enforceable, and so, we're going to have to work through that. But for new construction, this becomes a moot point under the new development agreement. No more subsidy, no more city participation. It all carries to the individual property owners.
I think I have to remember, too, this was a, really a unique situation that happened out there with this development, and it wasn't something that normally would happen. And I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Demers. And, believe me, I wasn't the party in favor of doing it the way we did it, but I think since we, we got it done, I'm okay with taking that $11,500 and change, whatever it is, and just reducing it and leaving everything the way it is. Mr. Grassel.
As we sit here and talk about it, I remember making a statement that I wasn't very happy about us dumping the $25,000 bucks, and I said I wouldn't put another dollar towards that project. So, I think I might have to stick with that, that I'm, we're not going to give this $11,000 back to that project. So, that's where I'm going to sit.
I guess.
Run over there. I wasn't very happy.
So, basically, next week, there's going to be a resolution in front of us to reduce $11,540.19 for a vote. That's just going to be in front of us, and we can vote on it.
To the savings that we ended up with when we finally did the project, when it was finally built.
Right. Anybody else have anything?
No. I'm, I'm going to concur with the mayor's position on this.
Mr. Chair, if I may, then, I guess, as far as staff, then, based on this, and so we don't have a consensus, I will bring resolutions with, with both options available.
Actually, I would just bring a resolution with one option available, and if that gets voted down, then the other adopted resolution will have to be just submitted.
You mean the one as?
The, the one that was adopted back on August 1st of 2017. We've already adopted it.
That's true.
We just haven't filed it.
Okay. Yep. I'll just bring this one. Right, thank you.
You would not need direction from us to file it? That would just become automatic at that point?
It would.
Yep.
It's already been approved.
All right. Let's move on. Number two, consideration proposal of replat properties. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe back in probably about 2011, 2012, I believe Mr. Wolfrey presented a proposal to the city for replating of properties adjacent to kind of the flood protection system. I don't recall the specifics why that didn't move forward, probably budgeting reasons at the time. But I think, really, the need to do this has become more apparent the last few years. So, basically, got Chris Dordheim with me tonight. Chris is our registered land surveyor. He basically went through, kind of revised the proposal that I think was initially presented to the council. And so, actually going to kind of turn it over to him, have him kind of go through what he has in the proposal. And then he, we did hand out some examples of just some different areas where, you know, we do see issues, just kind of as examples for you to look at. So, with that, I'll kind of turn over to Chris.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Mr. Chairman, Council, Mayor, appreciate the opportunity to kind of explain this. I hope everyone's had a chance to look through the proposal in your packet. I won't go through it line by line, but, you know, there's some bullet points in there, some bold writing that, that really encompasses a, a lot of different things that we're seeing within the city. You know, this is something that wasn't entirely solicited, but it wasn't unsolicited either. Over the past number of years, since I've been starting to work closer with Steve and Greg and the city, and, and certainly with Nancy and Ron, we, we recognized a lot of different issues that, you know, I, I think it's something that fell through the cracks. You know, obviously, 20 years ago, there was a lot bigger fish to fry in this town, and, and that was the focus. Well, these are some things that I think need to be taken care of, you know, at, at some time. I think the can's maybe been kicked down the road for a little while, but, but just the same, we're bringing it up again. As Steve mentioned, it was brought up in 2011, for whatever reason. It wasn't acted upon. But, you know, just kind of getting into some of these bold letter items in my proposal, the first thing is, is the ordinance on hand with the city of East Grand Forks. You know, frankly, we're, we're making, as a city, the layperson, the general public, conform to plating statutes and everything else. While the city has a lot of, a lot of areas that aren't following their own statute, I think that's a little risky, perhaps, on the city's end. And, you know, a replat of some of these areas that need to be vacated or otherwise, you know, addressed in some manner, I think that kind of fixes those issues. Insufficient records, you know, we have a number of different areas that have been bought out. You know, some of those have gotten lost in the shuffle. Ron and I were, were talking about a, a couple areas where doing title work is just really a significant undertaking, because, you know, the records haven't been, you know, really kept in the manner they should. For abandoned roadways, have they been officially abandoned? Have they been vacated? You know, sometimes by resolution, but not officially filed of record. You know, one thing that we're doing right now, there was, there was a request to delineate the, the levy boundary by the VFW arena. That's something that I was working on for Steve. It was requested. And we're back to the old dusty books in Crookston, trying to, you know, get these, get these easements delineated again, instead of having something on file. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of more efficient ways to do things after the plating is done. Maybe we should just jump into a few of the exhibits that I printed out for you. This first one is also in your packet, but a little bigger. You can see that on the west side of Central Avenue, where Third Street projects west, you know, right now, that's not in its own designated corridor. That's crossing platted lot lines. You know, the, the street is laying in there. We did a survey for the, for the area right at, residential boundary survey for the parties at Central and Third, just in the southwest quadrant. And if you look at that, the, the legal description of the property was probably a page long, of all meets and bounds kind of coming around where the street, where the curb was, you know, kind of going on the back edge. You know, a plat in this area would clean all that up. It would designate proper right-of-way corridors for the streets, for the utilities. We could place them in easements. For bike paths, we can set those where they need to be. Eliminate all these lot lines. Central Avenue on this same exhibit, as it turns and goes to the southeast, you know, the street's running right through a residential lot, or the south half of a residential block, I should say. Kind of cuts right through there. Looking at the second page, you can look to the southwest, or to the bottom-left portion of the highlighted line. That's all the park area. Well, we've got, we've got a number of lots and blocks in there that don't need to be in there. I think that's one of the items that I visited with Nancy about, as far as record-keeping on the city's behalf. They have hundreds and hundreds of parcel numbers that they're continuing to do all of their paperwork on, and it just doesn't need to be the case. You know, this whole area, we can get rid of these public road. Has one outlot or subplot, whatever we want to call it. I mean, that's down the roadways, but nonetheless, you know, we have baseball fields that are in residential lot lines. You know, perhaps we can identify those as different park areas. You know, really, this is a, it's a housecleaning item for all the properties within the city. The, the third one was one that, well, obviously, when I was looking at the information for the VFW arena, the levy easement, I started looking in this area. This is just east of there, in Exhibit 3. And you can see down at Folsom Court, we've got public road right-of-way in the FEMA levy that hasn't been vacated. You know, it, it still exists. So, when Jason is telling people to stay out the levees, well, they're within public road right-of-way. You know, so, there's, again, housecleaning items that, you know, it's, it's an undertaking. I mean, we would, we would have to do title search on a lot of these parcels, but as far as that goes, it would be the last time we have to do all that title search. Find all the records, easements. You know, we would take some, some looking forward from a planning standpoint also, to identify easement corridors for future utilities, perhaps future build-out in these park areas, a lot of different things. I mean, we can't be short-sighted either, but it's a process. And I guess with that, just kind of looking through here, simplify and expedite applications for funding. There again, we're talking about not having to chase that title, you know, sometimes a month-long title search through the abstracting company, confusing legal descriptions, you know, numerous lots, blocks, all those sort of things. Couple other things in there, but, but I guess in a nutshell, I've said it a couple times already, it's a, it's a cleanup item. Like I said, perhaps fell through the cracks years back, when a lot of this stuff was, you know, getting shifted around, buyouts of different areas, and designating levy easements, all these sort of things. But in the interest in the city, and efficiency, and, well, accuracy going forward, we're bringing it here before you again. With that, I'll try to answer any questions, if there are any, and certainly, anyone that, perhaps Ron and Nancy, if you have anything to share, by all means.
Thank you. Is, I guess I'd like to ask Nancy how she feels about this. Is this a necessity? And is there, is there like different ranges of how much we have to do and what we can get by with? And what is the budget, what is the estimated cost to, to do the maximum, and what could we maybe get by with?
I guess, this, this is something, do we have to do something? Is your first one? You haven't done anything for 20 years.
Right.
So, to that end, you know, honestly, you could continue down this path. I mean, that's, that's the pure and simple of it. What I did is I, on that front page on this thing, I did a, a five-year, five-year stretch on this to the tune of $16,000 a year, which we estimate can fix all of it. Now, to the, to the point where if there's other areas that are, I don't know, in more need, or, or make more sense to start in this area, or maybe we only do certain areas, absolutely. I mean, we're, we're willing to work with whatever the city's needs are. You know, if there's something that, perhaps there's an area that you're looking at developing further, perhaps we start there, and maybe we end there. You know, it's, it's just something that we took a look at as a whole with the city, because all of the, all of the different areas are all kind of in the same boat. The same situation applies to them. Now, to that end, you know, we could do nothing. We could do partially what I proposed here. We could do it all. You know, that's, that's the city's decision. But I guess, I'm not sure if that answers your question completely or not.
I'd like to hear Nancy's comments.
I would say that it is beneficial, especially from a planning standpoint. I would think Water and Light would also feel very strongly about this. Both Dan Boies and I came across a number of different areas where, at the time after the flood, and when we bought out those properties, because the city owned it, we did relocate utilities through those without, in fact, putting in any easements. Now that we're coming in, LaFave Park is one in particular, the DNR boat ramp, trying to establish who owns property, who owns what, where the right-of-ways are, what type of utilities we have in there. Around Sacred Heart School specifically, that one is also a key concern. And then, right around the Frisbee Golf Course, VFW Arena, you know, those would be my top areas, you know, if we were to classify it in importance. The city of Grand Forks did redo all of theirs after the flood. It took them approximately 12 years to replat all of their properties. It, it is good practice. It makes it much easier for us in terms of any sort of safety dollars, any sort of transportation dollars. Obviously, we need to know where our right-of-ways are. We need to have those put down on some sort of a plat, as well as easements. So, always a benefit. Why it wasn't, I think it was a monetary issue back in 2011. I, I don't know why it wasn't approved, but needless to say, from a planning budget, typically my planning budget only includes salaries and professional services, which is the MPO. So, I would know where to budget it. So, it would be a council decision, which is why, again, we're proposing it as, you know, a proposal, and it would be up to you if you want. it as, you know, a proposal, and it would be up to you, if you wanted us, to come back with maybe our top three locations, or, you know, how you would want to do it. I would state all are beneficial.
Okay, that's, that's what I would like, and that's all I need. I think you've answered my question, and I think the public's concerned about just throwing money away for just cleaning, taking lines off a map or something like that. I think, I think it does make sense. I do think it probably is wise to prioritize things and do it over a longer term, and so it doesn't, it isn't a sticker shock every, you know, all in one year, so.
Yeah, and we could even break it down further. You know, if you wanted us to go into more of like a seven-year and eight-year, you know, and drop it under a certain amount, you know, or if you want to set an amount, and then we could just prioritize yearly which, which ones we're going to tackle, we can do that, too. It's, you know, it's up to the council. Yeah.
Mr. Goulson.
I was just going to say, from a legal standpoint, it would be beneficial for me as well. This isn't just a problem that came from the '97 flood. There's areas that have never been replatted from back in the 70s, specifically down there in the DNR, the, the landing and down on Hill Street along the frontage road there. And it's kind of, in my opinion, a pay-me-now or a pay-me-later, because we're constantly having to do legal work or title work on areas one, two, and three times, and you end up paying for that each individual time. This will just make it a lot cleaner. I do understand, you know, the prioritizing of, of the issues, but it's been, it's been there a long time. There's, there's areas in town that have not been replatted for, you know, 50, 50 or more years that we keep running into today. And it's just a timeframe where we should probably get started on it and, and spread it out over as much time as you need to, but I think there needs to be a start.
Mr. Grassel.
She had answered that about the budget piece of where she wants to put it.
Mr. Doris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Doris, for putting this together. I recall going, going through this back when WSN was our new city engineer. This was one of their, their proposals they put out at that time, and it was rejected by the council. And subsequently, we were bypassed by the DNR for a boat ramp that was programmed for that, citing specifically no proof of clean title on those lots. So, while it isn't a necessary thing, if we want to better that area, if we want to put in, if we want to get the DNR to put, update that, that boat ramp, which it should have been done in 2012, it's now six years past, this is, this is the groundwork that needs to be done. As for the cost, do we, do we use all our $130,000 CDBG money for the parking lot? Any of that?
I don't think we used any CDBG funds for the parking lot. I think that was all TIF, extra TIF dollars.
Which, I guess I would, I would propose looking at, since that CDBG money came in as flood recovery dollars, I think this may be usable for something like that. I would look at, I would ask Carla and Mr. Murphy to...
We're using that money for the heating and air conditioning units.
Okay.
About $280, but I think there might be another fund with a little bit, the community development fund of 130 that we were going to do medallions on the wall, on the
Well, that's, I, I was just looking at the report. There's 130,000 in community development or whatever, so I don't know which one. So, I would look at that as, I mean, to me, this is, it's a direct result of, or most of it. I know there's some, like Mr. Goulson, and I don't know why you looked at Chad when you said the 70s. But, but, you know, this is most of, mostly a direct result of the changes that were affected by the, by the flood. So, I could, I could see that as a potential funding source. So, I guess I would ask staff to look into that, I guess.
I do have a question.
I'm going to make a statement first, though, please. Just give me a sec.
Oh, go ahead.
I remember we went through this process, too, when we did work on the pool, and we found out that actually it wasn't in our name. We had to get all that work done, and everybody worked on that. And I worked with WSN over at their office, looking up stuff, and went with that process. So, I think it's a great idea we do this. How we do it, I guess if we have money somewhere to do it, great. If not, that would bring forth a process of, you know, is it eight to 10 years, whatever it may be, whatever time frame you look at. I think that's probably needed. Will eliminate any issues going forward, and hopefully clean up, get in front of any issues that may come with whoever it is, DNR, no matter who it is. We'll go from there. Mayor.
Behind my house is a levy. The levy was placed after I bought the lot. I entered into an agreement with the city for the placement of that levy. They had basically three easements. The largest was a construction easement. It got a little smaller for the total of the maintenance easement, plus the actual footprint of the levy behind my house. And so there's this agreement with the city, which outlines those easements that I gave, and some of them are permanent. Now, if those don't show on a plat, for example, it looks to me like maybe they don't show on the plat yet.
Correct. Like, for instance, this Exhibit Three, where we're seeing Folsom Court, the last registered plat is the original one from 1959. That's the only plat you're going to find, and obviously, no levy easements show up on that.
So, what if I dispute that levy in my yard, and I want to see the river now, and I want that levy out? Does the fact that no plat shows the levy weaken the city's position to defend that levy easement, or isn't that a big deal?
I don't think that's correct. There's still going to be the levy easement of public record that has been filed, and with the city attorney, I don't want to overstep his authority to answer these questions. But, but no, the easement is still a recorded, agreed-upon document of public record. So, I'm afraid that your river view is still going to be restricted.
I think you better look at that, because there are a lot of things that weren't piled back then when we went through stuff.
Well, you know, honestly, I mean, I, I speak tongue-in-cheek, but you look at some of the vacated roadways, resolutions.
Everybody else knows what I'm talking about.
Well, there's a lot of things that may not be filed, so.
I would feel better if all of our documents over here and our plats over here all said the same thing. I'd feel better with that.
Sure.
And then I wouldn't even argue for my view anymore.
There is a fund, the 1997 downtown development, and there are some activity in there with Nancy's stuff, so we'd have to look to see how much she needs for
We use it, yeah. We use it for snow removal and lawn, lawn mowing, and, you know, some of those smaller items for CDBG. Sometimes a replacement of the brick down along the sidewalks, some ADA. But there is some funds that go into that from Cabela's, if I'm not mistaken. So, we do get some funds back into that fund. But, again, still, I do budget professional services. It includes MPO and attorney. We can check that budget and see if we have any wiggle room to use funds from there, look, see what funds we have available, and then what room we have to budget in the planning, and provide that to you at the council meeting next Tuesday. So.
That'd be great. And Bill, so have anything on that? Mr. Reed, a pill?
I agree. I think we're going to have to do something, because the way it sounds, these plots were done before the mayor was born. So, we, we need to do something. And I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure if we do it in a five-year period, that WSN will greatly grant us a 20% discount off this rate, too.
We'll work within whatever constraints, yeah.
Can you, Bill, have anything? I'm done. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Move on to number three, discussion on reimbursement for concrete curb replacement. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Try not to take too much time on this. I will apologize. I did get some new information today here as well regarding this, so I will add that to my, when I go through the RCA here. Really, what, what happened with this is, we've had the old practice, on our, in our ordinance, we've had the, the ways that the curbs would need to be cut for when a high-back curb is, is in place and a driveway is being put in. We had ordinance for that. However, the past practice for many, many years has been that we have not followed that. We've allowed them to, to cut in the low spot of the curb, take the back out, and then replace it back there. However, the issue that has come up with that and why this is being brought forward or being made an issue by Public Works is the fact that that then creates a, a spot for the water to get under the curb and compromise that and causes it to lower in future years and makes a maintenance problem. So, Public Works wanted to start enforcing our, our ordinance. So, then last year, they started doing that. They started talking, when they would see these going on, they would stop and talk to them. The issue is, is that the, the one individual here that is in your RCA really did not balk at that, and, and that one replaced it. And in, from what I found out here, and now two other subsequent projects that he had, that were already in the process, that he had already quoted the original price on, he just decided to, he, he went with the new, with the new rules and took the curb out completely, even though he had quoted for the cutting on that. So, I guess with that, when this was being enforced, or being brought forward to the other developers and to the other builders, we did get more pushback, and we had quite a bit of a conversation about this. And what was ultimately decided was that any, any ones that were quoted or in, in the process, any, any houses that were in the process of that being, being, excuse me, being constructed that had not gotten to this point yet or had been quoted out, they would be able to follow, finish out under the old practice. However, anything new would then need to come under the, the ordinance. So, with that being said, it was brought forward that this is, was probably not fair to the, to the person who just went and went along with it. So, the question is, is this something that we would want to look at for reimbursement or to make up the difference for?
Mayor.
And I do appreciate, in, in this moment, in fact, some months back, I was brought into this conversation by Mr. Stordahl, Mrs. Ellis, and Mr. Emery. And we met with contractors. I was made aware of it through a building wholesaler, building retailer, materials retailer. And he knew of a contractor that was having some trouble with all of this. And so, we worked really hard to try to get our heads around this. And of the three that you mentioned, to that one contractor, of those three, two of those, the additional cost was picked up by the property owner. He was able to go back to them and say, we're caught in a bit of a conundrum here. The old way, cut the back off. The lower-priced way is no longer acceptable to the city. We are going to have to go to the better way. Remove the curb section, repour it with the low spot for the driveway for it to come into there. They got the better outcome. They paid the additional amount. And so, two of the three went like that. There was one project where this contractor had to eat the cost. He was not able to go to any customer or to the other contractor, maybe the general, and recover that. And he feels that the amount that he ate, and based on some conversation with you on a, like, $40 per, per linial foot kind of a cost, he came in at that, about $1,500 for that one project. And these others, where the property owner got the better, the better outcome, the approved way, the way that we're recommending it, and paid the difference, in one way, they're whole already, from the standpoint that they did get the better outcome. They, they would have had to pay that amount. There was no rework done. It wasn't done once, and then reworked to do it a second time. They basically just paid for it to be done once in the better way. And so, and then, as, also, as Mr. Murphy, as you pointed out, those that were partway into the process, had the backs cut off, they were ready to go, they were allowed to finish in the original way. And that was, again, you're looking for some point of fairness. And what you came down to is, as each contractor was notified, they became responsible to do it in the new way. And unfortunately, in the notification process, and it's nobody's fault, it is what it is. Some contractors were doing projects quicker, and they became aware of it sooner. Other ones, their projects lagged out a little bit, and they got just caught in, in the middle. So, if the backs were cut off, and they were all set to pour in the old way, we let them finish. And if the backs were not cut off, and they now know the right way, the new way, they are all of them now to uphold the new standard, which is, take out the section of curb to the next logical joint and repour it with the place for the driveway. We do still approve, and maybe we want to look at that ordinance, we do still approve just grinding it off, right?
Correct.
That is still an approved way. So, take, take that, that high-back curb that's there, grind it down, so you have exposed aggregate the whole way. It might be wavy, it might be uneven. By all accounts, all contractors we've talked to said, that's not a good outcome for anybody. You build a $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 house, and the first thing you see is a line of exposed aggregate where you ground off the back of a curb. They said, I don't really think that's a good even inclusion in your, in your policy. But there it is. Most of them are not doing that. They, they don't, they don't like how it looks. The back at that point is even uneven because it was not really a finished top edge. It was down in the dirt when they, or, or, you know, below grade when they did it. So, that would be my suggestion, is, in fairness to the city, in fairness to the property owners and the contractor, that that one who had to basically eat that $1,500 would, would receive that.
So, it'd be just that, that one? Okay, great.
Are you on board with that, from all you've learned?
Yeah, definitely. And in fact, I just looked at some stuff this, earlier this afternoon, kind of looking at costs for removal and replacement from our federal project and stuff. And actually, what I had kind of penciled out, I actually came up exactly with about $1,500 additional per driveway. So, I think that's more than fair.
I apologize. I, I had received some information today that the, that they were looking for the other two as well. So, I apologize. Yeah.
Mr. Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is this in our city specs?
Yes.
To do it this way?
Yep.
For the past two years, right?
10 years plus, but enforced for...
10 years plus. Was not enforced.
But they should know it.
And was not, was not provided to the new building inspections office until Jason pointed it out to us. And so, at this point, we are handing that out to every single person that comes in for a curb cut. It's been sent out to every single concrete person, as well as all of our developers. So, but yeah, we were unaware of these specs.
Are all the, the people involved with doing these aprons, are they all licensed general contractor or licensed contractors, or are they do-it-yourself, home builder?
The concrete people are, you know, they could be subcontractors. But we know all the
Right, but a home, you can be a subcontractor, depends on who you're, if you're doing the home construction as yourself, you're generally contracting your home by yourself, you're responsible for that.
And they're getting all the information.
And that's what I'm saying, is, were these all done by a licensed general contractor, or were they done by homeowners acting as general contractors?
The ones that are asking for them?
Any of them, all of them.
The ones I know have all been credible, top-quality, licensed.
Yeah, yeah. Now, if I could interject, two contractors have said, this is very intricate work to create, to recreate that line in the curb section, to have the fill below there not settle or move. This is very intricate work. Not all quasi-cement contractors could do this. So, they do have a little concern about it that way, but they themselves would say, but we can do it, and we can do it. So, we'll have to keep an eye on it. From an inspection standpoint, if there's a contractor that seems to struggle with this, we might have to not approve it. If it's not done, you know, it's got, the flowage has to continue past that driveway. You can't leave a low spot or a high spot. They will block water is the smartest thing going through there.
As from a general contractor perspective, it's always hard work.
From what we've seen, our, our cement people do not have an issue with it. They know how to do it. They're doing those over in Grand Forks. So, the cement people just moved right into, yep, we've done these before. They had no issues. They knew it. They asked a couple of questions. It's the general contractors who are doing their own cement work that are struggling.
Well, there was a pushback as far as Well, and it was a pushback as far as cost as well. They're saying it's going to add to the cost of the house.
My question then is, so there's basically Mr. Knutson who, one told that he, it wasn't in compliance, did the right thing, redid it in compliance, and ate it. And then when we had two other contractors that were told that this is how it was supposed to be done, they didn't redo it. And we said that that's fine. And that's, so we're paying $1,500 for our inability to uphold our own rules?
Actually, I did talk to Mr. Knutson again today. And the reason why this is an issue is there was no one to pass that cost along to.
And I, my point isn't about him. I think if, if I saw what the city was doing when we're saying, well, I guess, you know, we're really going to enforce this. And then we say to the next two people, after the person redoes it, we say, well, we'll let you guys go. I would, I would be like, hey, wait a second. You don't mean to redo it.
The way it's one standard is, it didn't turn out to be rework by Mr. Knutson. He made that clear. On the, we're talking about the house built for Northland. So, the project house, their budget was such that it could not go back to them. And therefore, he had to eat it. He did not cut it and then have to redo it. There was no rework. There really was, he did it one time, the new way, but had already bid it lower. And in that, in that case, was locked into that price, had nobody to go back to the homeowner and say, we got caught in the crossfire. We're going to have to do it this updated way at a slightly higher cost and pass on. The other two went that way, but this one, he ate it.
Is this the difference between the new cost and the old cost, the 1,500?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I guess.
In its entirety.
I guess when, as far as, you know, say for enforcing the rule and that we had, there was two that really kind of bucked it. One bucked it, I would say fairly vocally and was calling, started calling the mayor and from what I understand, called a couple council members as well and was quite adamant that this was not fair and that it was going to, you know, well, I'm not, I won't get into it, but he was, he was quite adamant and was very vocal.
He was to the point, and I think he's a quality contractor. He was to the point of saying, this way that you're requiring is not better. It is not better. We can seal the back of that. We can do this and that. And our engineers said, that's great. You seal that. And then the seal holds for three years or five years or seven years. And then the seal comes out and now you've got water infiltration. You've got soil settling and you're back where you were. Sealing, a crack is great, but you've got to maintain that seal. You've got to pull it out and replace the seal at some interval or you're back to no seal in there. I've, and I brought in about 20 photos that day on my laptop, all up and down my street, some done the old way, some done the new way. Without question, the new way holds better for a longer period of time without fracturing, without water infiltration, without low spots. The way that we're requiring it at that additional cost, if it wasn't better, I'd argue against it. But I've come to believe it's better. You're getting a better quality product with the new way, the newly required way to the benefit of the long-term stability of your driveway and your curb section. It's better.
Oh, the request next week would be $1,500 for, that's what we're looking for. That's what's going to go forward.
That's correct.
That's what's going to come. So, you can vote on it next week if you want or not.
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything on it?
Is there a, do we have a city spec book online? That should be pronto.
One thing now is, they come in and pulled all the building permit. You give them all the requirements, correct?
Yeah. When we took over, obviously, we weren't even issuing curb cut permits for new houses. I, I was under, we were told we issued curb cut permits. The only thing that I have in my planning ordinance was for the width, the apron to the sidewalk. So, that's what I was verifying when they were coming in for curb cut permits. It was pointed out to me by Jason that there were specific specifications. We have included those with every single application that we have. They are put online there with our news, our new permit applications. So, it's all in the building code. But as far as the spec book, I don't even know if we have a spec book. We follow build, you know, Minnesota building codes, international building codes. All of those are online. But as far as the city specs, I don't know, you know, if we have anything specifically. So, that might be something that is, you know, Jason and Steve and Building Inspection work for is putting it with or something.
I guess it isn't an ordinance, but I don't believe it's online. But we do, it is in our, I guess in our code book.
And I do have our development handout and it's been included in that. So, we can get that up and online as well.
I mean, Grand Forks has a boned book that you can look up everything. And I guess my point is, is we've seen this a couple of times where we have something in our spec book, but either a general contractor or a do it yourself general contractor doesn't know. And then it come, they put in sidewalks, they put in whatever, and it doesn't meet our stuff. And the city ends up being the default bad guy for some reason, because we have rules. And part of that, I guess, to some extent is because we haven't published, we haven't been consistent with enforcement. So, I guess we're stuck with that. But if we want to have things done in a right way, so that when we come to put sidewalks in, the driveways are correct and, you know, and all those other things, we don't end up saying, well, yeah, we'll repour your entire driveway because you didn't do it right. And, you know, so it should be a priority, I think. And I know I've talked to Jason a little bit about making that a priority. And I think there's been some work done as far as looking at what direction we need to go with it. But, I mean, I would set as a goal for next building cycle, you know, that we have something that's published and online and available and clear as a bell what you're required to do on building in East Grand Forks. And one thing, I meant to talk about it on the last one, on the assessment or on the plats, while we have our engineers here, it's something that we should address as a city. It's, it is germane to the plating and the flooding and stuff like that. But we should start talking, I don't know how many have listened, but down, the DNR has made its recommendation for the Fargo Moorhead diversion project. And their choice is that they're saying, basically, they're trading off flood events south of Fargo for potential impacts upstream. I've talked a little bit with Vice President Kenveen over in Grand Forks a little bit about this. He's been very active in that discussion. I would think it would be to East Grand Forks' and Grand Forks' benefit to start looking at the impacts of that, see what, what we should be, because there's a, there's a comment period, I think, through the middle of September, that we should have an educated comment about if there's going to be impacts downstream to the benefit of upstream. We should, we should be made whole. And granted, we've, we've been the beneficiary of immense gifts from the state and federal government. And we all are very appreciative of it. And I think to a person, we, we want that for Fargo Moorhead. But to, to put that on someone else without making them whole, that should all be part of that cost. So, I would just, I don't know if, if these guys are the right group, but I mean, they're a city engineer. They've, they were involved intricately with putting the levees together, all that kind of stuff. I would, I would say that we should have a coordinated effort with Grand Forks about that, working with their engineering staff, their political bodies or members, and, and make sure that East Grand Forks and Grand Forks are represented when it comes to that comment period. So, sorry to bring that. It's, it's kind of the flood stuff, but I just wanted to bring it up before we get too far down the cycle. So.
To that, I remember being on the council when we were getting our core project approved. And we had to demonstrate mathematically that we did not worsen the condition for anyone around us. We had to expand that Hartsfield diversion. They brought in a hydrologist who said, you're actually making us worse off, you know, behind your, your, your package here. So, we had to expand the Hartsfield diversion to meet with their hydrologist who said, yeah, now you're not making us any worse. You're not creating a more difficult situation for us. I thought that was a guiding principle of the core to say you cannot.
Well, this is, this is the DNR permit now. So, they don't care about hydrology. They care about politics. So, and I guess I, we can't direct them to, we can't direct them to spend money on, and study this tonight. But I would say, maybe get your ducks in a row so that if, if we need to expend some money to study this or talk to Grand Forks or whoever, we can start acting on it. Because like I said, I think that comment period is coming up and I don't think we want to miss it. So.
Good luck into that.
Move on to the next one. Number four, requests for direction on golf course agreement. Mr. Golsdahl?
Just to be very brief, but I know that there's been some discussions and emails that have gone back and forth about potentially amending the lease with the Valley Golf Course so that in the future, if there's a site on city land that we would allow them to put a, put a tower. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't me holding anything up. I haven't seen anything come across my desk recently that would indicate that there's any discussion about putting a tower at Valley Golf. So, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. I'm not supposed to be doing anything. If I am supposed to be doing something, I'd like to have some direction on this body. Let me know. So, that's the reason it's there.
Mayor?
So, yep, the conversation coming out of the denial of the, of the cell tower location based upon our ordinance and the effect that it would have on the neighborhood, coming out of that was a commitment to still work hard to make it happen to the benefit of Verizon, to the benefit of, in this case, the golf course, and to, to the benefit of all of our citizens who use a cell service from that, that carrier. And a location tentatively has been identified that puts it out of the way of line of sight to most folks or let's say everybody. It's probably the best location we could find, still accessible to the utilities coming off of an established roadway so they can service the tower, coming in with vehicles. And the request from the Valley Golf folks, and I would agree with it, is if we could go ahead and prepare, and I hope I use the right words, we're planning to do an addendum to the lease that we have with Valley Golf that would allow for the placement of a cell tower on leased property and that would carry the revenue from the lease to Valley Golf for the period that they are in existence. If they would not continue on as a golf course, then the addendum would some way revert back to then the revenue going to the city. But the anticipation is that Valley Golf will still be here in 100 years. And, you know, to the extent that this thing goes on, it would be to their benefit to receive that lease payment. And so, our hope would be to send a strong signal to Verizon and to Mr. Buell and to all parties that, look, this is a great location. We really want to clear the way for it to happen. And in good faith, to direct our lawyer, this is what we're discussing right now, to prepare that addendum in draft form and that it would receive some degree of approval by us in its wording and that it could become then available to Valley Golf in their continued conversations with Verizon to say, look, in good faith, the city has prepared this addendum to our lease agreement, which opens the door for this to happen. It's one more obstacle cleared away.
Makes sense?
Well, I do. But I just want to make sure that this group approves of that because sometimes I've got, I don't have approval or direction.
I think that's what, when we, and I had met with the mayor and talked to him about the location, we discussed this. My hope would be that we would move forth in approving that. I know that Mr. Emery went down there and looked at everything. I'm not sure what they did anything. Jeff, maybe you can, if you want to, maybe if you want to come up here, Jeff?
Oh, yeah.
And what I wanted to move forth was the proposal and our discussion from Verizon. It's my understanding there has not been a discussion coming forth from Verizon to us about getting this moved forward. And my thought, I guess, would be if we do the survey that, where it would be and have that ready and say, and vote on it saying, we will allow this, is that what Verizon's waiting for?
Yeah. Thanks for letting me speak here today, everyone. Got a chance to speak with?
Can we have you state your name?
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Jeff Camadula. I'm the Valley Golf Course General Manager and also speaking behalf on Board of Directors too. Thank you. So, got a chance to speak with Eddie Buell. As far as 2018, they have no plans to put any more money into a project as far as finding a site. But they are open in 2019 to looking into sites. Our goal is just to get things as prepped as we can for them, to display in front of them, that we sort of can maybe agree upon a spot and get things ironed out with the addendum to the lease. So, just try to make it as easy as possible.
The best scenario would be us to move forward, to have that surveyed to where it'd go, have the denim done, have the denim voted on by the council, to have that if they decide they want to put one there.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So.
Mark, do you have something?
I was just, we were talking about locations and I was wondering if there was already a location picked out.
Yes, we'd be kind of, and this is, I spoke with Eddie briefly on the phone and just kind of showed him. It would probably, I guess I'll have to show you an aerial view just of it. But it's, it's closer to our newer clubhouse, basically in between the levy and our new clubhouse over there.
Just to the west of the clubhouse.
Yep. I did some, you know, some Google. You know, you can kind of see how far away everything is. I mean, even just the nearest residence is, is almost 550 feet away, more at a kitty corner angle. There's very little houses over there compared to say, the last location that we were first looking at. So.
And I can also tell you that the previous spot and the residents that brought the issues forth know, are aware of this new spot and they are okay with this. They didn't have any issues.
Sure. We actually got, I mean, we had met with them months ago and they were kind of giving, giving us suggestions. We sort of had them just come speak their mind to us.
Which residence are you talking about? The twin homes along the drive there or?
Twenty Street.
Twentieth Street.
The townhomes never came forth today to a meeting.
Pardon me?
People in the townhomes never came forth because it never came out of zoning.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure who you were talking.
Who sits on it.
Sure.
It's ironic too, because within a week or two of the other site not being approved, both of these gentlemen sent me a picture of a map identifying the same site. And so, it really does place it, again, close to access from a roadway away from, from residences.
Sure.
Anybody have any issues if we go forth and have the survey done and have the addendum done to give Mr. Golsdahl the right direction that he can move forth with it? Does any else have any issues? Mr. Rappel?
Does it have safeguards for the loan that we have through the EDA with them in there that?
So, you're saying if they're in default that?
If they're in default that we?
Get the income from it?
Right.
Well, yeah. And I was just going to say is that, to that point is, it should be that that is the first pay out of that lease.
Sure. And we've, we've actually met as a board to fully allocate the yearly revenue from the tower towards the city payment. So, until they are paid off.
That was a condition that Henry laid down right away, that he said, for me to support it, I would need to see that. And I passed it along to these guys early on and that let them hash it out. So, Henry, good job. So.
Yep. We've already, already got that ironed out on our end for that. So.
Does anybody have any issues or problems? Mike?
No, I don't have an issue with, just so I get this straight, we're, we're considering making a tweak to the lease. When Verizon comes forward to cite a tower, they have to go through a process and hearings and all of that stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. No issues.
Does anybody have anything? So, direction? Does anybody have anything? So, direction for you, Mr. Golsdahl?
Thank you. One last question, for the, for the diagrams and photos and such that we have, have those gotten to planning and zoning also for their early perusal?
No.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. We'll kick them out to them, just, just FYI, right? So let them kind of warm up to the idea also. Would that be okay?
I guess. We don't typically look at things that haven't been presented to us before, but we can certainly say, maybe someday in the possible future, this could possibly happen, and if you're on the board, would you approve it? Maybe we could do that.
Hypothetically.
Yeah.
The current conversation is going in this direction.
Yeah. I, I got a very different direction from Mr. Buell on what Verizon is looking towards, but we can always be hopeful that they'll continue to look at the golf course. So.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Number five, discussion on proposed 2019 budget.
Okay. Um, I guess I'll, I'll start with that. I guess what I'm looking for is, um-
Hang on a second, Mr.-
Sorry, just for what, the comment that Nancy just made. If, if Verizon is, or Mr. Buell has made a comment to the fact that he's not sure if they're gonna go there, why, why would we spend money towards that? I'm just, I mean, if, if, if he's stated that, we, we should probably know that before we start spending, because I'm sure Ron's not doing it pro bono. So.
What? Really?
I mean.
The comment that I received was that they have already spent a lot of money and for years on golf course property. They're just not interested at this time, and they're looking at other options first. So, that's, that was the information that I received, but they will keep that location open if another one doesn't come to fruition.
Well, from the demand, so I mean, from the demand, from what he showed us, his little circle, there's definitely a demand there.
And I would say, to the point, I've, I guess I've, I've worked against this to some extent, um, because I didn't like that, I didn't think their model worked, but to, to the extent that we would spend some, some time and effort and dollars to set this up, I would say that that would be a, maybe a signal to Mr. Buell that they aren't gonna be in for that much of a, they aren't gonna be under the same type of constraint as they were before. So I could see, I agree with you, why do this until they tell us that that's what they want, but I get the idea that because of last time, they might be, to Nancy's point, a bit hesitant about trying, dipping their toe in the water. This may be an offer of good faith.
And Verizon is not the only cell phone, you know, provider out there. So, um-
It's the only one I have.
There could be a chance that AT&T or someone else may be looking at that same location. We, we don't know. So it, it would be of the benefit to the golf course to have that ability. That's all I will say.
Okay. Don't get on.
Mr. Murray?
Um, thank you. Um, based on last week's budget discussion, uh, I guess we do have some, some further information as far as clarifying, um, some of, uh, the personnel questions as far as personnel costs. Um, so, you know, I'd be more than happy to answer some of those questions on that, but I guess what I'd like to start with, and where I'd be more interested from, is, um, has the council had a chance to digest some of this, uh, and see what kind of questions and feedbacks the council may have on what has been proposed by staff? Um, and then based on that, we'll go through, you know, where we're at, and, and as far as what, um, what we found, as far as where the costs have come, and particularly with the personnel. So I guess with that, I'd like to just get any feedback from the council if possible. Would you like to start? Anybody?
This might be homework. Um, how much of, it's a pretty sizable increase in personnel, you know, well ahead of the, the rate of inflation and whatnot. Would you be able to parse out how much of that increase came from our wage study? You couldn't do it, like snap your fingers, but would you be able to come back in the future with an answer? How much of that came about as increases from our wage study?
Um, Terry, do you, yeah, we, we talked about that. It, it, there's a few variables that were put into, into there. I, I guess, well, I'll, I'll answer this in another way. I guess where we came in with the, the, um, there's several factors that are, that have caused the proposals that we have in front of you with the personnel costs. One is, um, well, actually, two, we're reflecting more realistic expectations or estimates of what our personnel costs are gonna be, number one, with overtime, and number two, with our seasonal and part-time help, getting them to where our actual expenses have been run out through the past, the past few years. Um, another area where, that has gone up is the Parks and Rec position that has not been filled, and not been accounted for since Ms. Haddon retired. Um, that was added back in. Uh, we also have added back in a truck driver position, um, and I know, I apologize, Jason is not here, he is out sick tonight. Um, he didn't even come in today. Um, so the truck driver position that has been vacant for a while, um, is put into here as well, as a placeholder, that he would like to see filled, uh, if possible. So though, that's where the majority of it came in. Um, there are also some other assumptions as far as, um, with the wage study that have been put into there. Um, yeah, I have a proposal here where it shows that, um, here, the, the ones that are in red, I'll kind of go through, are the ones that were, um, adjusted for the, the wage study. It would be the secretary, jailer, and dispatch in the police department. This is in part of the wage study, but another assumption that was made in the, in the personnel budget that was put before you is, um, four corporals are also accounted for in that. Let me see, when I know there was another one, um, in the wage study. Anyways, so I guess to answer your question, the wage study, um, as far as the overall portion of it, I'm gonna say it's, it's not very large. It's, it's probably more, I'm gonna guess, it's, it's probably in the $25,000 range, as far as the potential for the wage study.
Thank you.
I know that we discussed this, you and I, David, about that, what impact that would be, and I guess one of the impacts, looking at that wage study, I think the highest one was, and I think I had a discussion with the chief on it, was maybe, is it 10 to 14% or something, the largest one?
I think slightly over 10 when the final numbers are, I think they're still being worked on, but I believe it's slightly over 10 for the, for the largest.
The rest were, other ones are minimal, not that large.
Correct.
If I remember correctly on that.
Yeah, the, the patrol officers were the, were the, actually were the biggest, it was the one that affected the most. Um, probably the, I mean, the, the largest number, the one that was probably the more, the, the highest percentage of a jump, is the secretary, dispatch, and jailers. Um, they moved a whole nother grade on that. So, there's, it's probably the highest percentage, but the largest number was the patrol officers themselves.
This is all assuming we adopt-
Correct.
A hundred percent of the recommendations.
That is correct.
Of the, the truck driver, what is that dollar on?
Uh... Sixty-one.
Seven, when I figured out, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I mean, we can remember, that's, that's, that's not just wages, that's the cost of the city, with health insurance, everything like that.
And the sixty-two of the park admin, is that wages and everything else?
That's everything else as well.
So I mean, just looking at it, Reed, just, I'm just going through the motions, so don't get too excited. There's a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars on two positions.
Correct.
Can you go part-time on that position, Reed?
If we have to, I suppose it would help us. I mean, and even part-time is gonna be better than nothing at all. Um, but certainly have the, the time and the need for a full-time position there.
In the past other years, we, we looked at about a 7% increase in, in salary and wages, so that's kind of a typical increase. I know that's what we came up with, I think last, it was 7.4%, or somewhere around there. So, just so you're aware of that.
Mm-hmm. Strictly wages, I include everything?
Yes. When you look at the whole package, yes.
Just want to make sure I understood it correctly.
Yes, yes.
Clarence, you have something, sir?
Yeah, concerning the Park District position, when Mrs. Haddon passed, or passed, retired, sorry. When she retired, we had the discussion of sharing personnel and redoing some things, and, uh, that never came to fruition. So unless that's tried and it doesn't work, I'm not in favor of putting on another Park District employee. Uh, the plan was there and outlaid, um, it just never happened for whatever reason, so.
Can you remind me, fresh memory, what the plan was?
They were gonna share the secretary with the streets of Public Works.
Okay.
Yep.
Could I, could I just add a couple comments as we're talking on that? I understand it's an incredibly difficult decision in the, the time that we're in with the budget process. The only, I guess, the consideration that I would ask for all of you to give to this position is, certainly, the, the conversation of sharing an admin assistant predates my time here. Um, and we've talked about this with our Parks and Recreation Commission at the most recent meeting as well. When I look at this position, what I would like to propose, we name it the admin assistant in general speak when we talk about it, because that's the position that was not filled, and we're looking to try to fill again. I don't look at this position if we're able to fill it as an admin assistant. I don't think that it's simply an admin assistant that sits at the center desk that's open in our office at this time. I think that this is, I have a job description written that I, I believe in some just brief conversation a year ago with, with Ms. Knudsen, uh, that would grade out roughly the same as an admin assistant, to be paid roughly the same, but we have not sent it to a Springbrook or to a Drone Associates to have it rated, but it would be for a Parks and Recreation Specialist is the title that I have for that job. And a, a portion of that work would be for administrative duties, to take some of that work off of myself, off of Mark. They would certainly be officed in our office, but it would not be a full-time job in that way. When, when I was interviewed for this position, and subsequently offered the position, one of the things in the discussion in the interview process with the city council, it was, what do you want to see different, or what are your expectations of my position of the Parks and Recreation Department in general? And one of the things that resoundingly was brought up over and over again was being able to add additional activities, add additional programming, provide better services to the residents. Again, I understand the, the conversation that we're in, in light of the budget, um, but in the short, very quick two years that I've been here, one thing that I've found is that with just myself and Mr. Dragich in our office, and the work that we put in, the time that we put in, I don't know how the two of us, and the current staffing level we have, have the time to add additional programming. And that's what I think that I would like to see if this position can be filled, is this would be someone that could do some administrative work, they could be a position that could add additional programming that we're not currently offering, they could help us, uh, in areas that we're currently not providing services, to be a well-rounded specialist of everything that we do within our department. And at the same time, be able to fill that current service that we don't have when we are very busy with summer programming, and we're running, Mark's running to recreation activities, and I'm running over to the pool, or wherever it may be, and we may have an hour or two in the middle of the day. Some days, it may be three or four hours where our office is closed, and there is no one there to answer to the public, to answer phones, to answer questions if people come to the window. Those are things that, um, to, to a little bit of Mr. Vedder's point, that I don't know that sharing an admin assistant with another department would be able to fill all of those needs or the wishes that I see our department being able to accomplish with the addition of this role. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Okay, thank you.
So that, looking at the wage study, somewhat got that figured out roughly, so we're still looking, you know, four hundred and seventy thousand without that wage study increase, with 505. Talking 25,000 roughly.
Correct.
Okay.
That sounds right, yes.
Four eighty, excuse me. On just personnel costs, without the wage study increase. So, I mean, other than that, you know, looking at it this last week, I mean, where do, where do you come up with getting this from negative, from the 14% to an acceptable level? I mean, that gets down to that, I mean, what, I mean, there's, other than looking at that and looking at capital purchases?
May I throw in?
Yeah.
Back to the question Mr. Demurs asked the last time we did this, um, and I think it probably was in the back of all of our minds, if we're doing a more realistic accounting of overtime, particularly in our police officers, and if we're doing a more realistic, um, representation of our seasonal employees, and if we've already been paying all of those things here and there, is there any way? So, so in other words, we really were, and I know we were being very, very careful to say, you cannot know ahead of time where the savings will be. It will be a little bit here, a little bit there, you won't know until after the year ends, and then you were able to some way cover those costs. But is there any additional accounting that we could put in to lower any of these categories, to show where there would be some legitimate savings, because we have been paying all of these things every year, the way it was?
And I think, to me, I, I did a little bit of thinking about that myself after last week. Um, it may be better in that it's more honest to get those back as close, to not give that wiggle room, because we don't know where it's gonna come, and then at those times that you have overruns, require people to come to the council to ask for money from the general fund. You know, that, that way we have a better accounting of what's going on, where those monies are flowing. Right now, we have, we have the buffer in, and all that, all that extra stuff, for whatever program, for whatever overruns we do, all gets, all gets figured out at the staff level, which I guess, if we wanted, if we want to delegate that authority to them, then that's fine. But if we want to get real about our budgeting, that requires the council, the policymakers, to step up to the plate and take that delegation back, and require us to make yes or no decisions. So you might have a council meeting that has 30 items that you're asking for budget, for, you know, general fund transfers, because it's not out of budget, you know, but, like I said, when you give power away, that's when, when you delegate authority, or when you delegate those powers, that's when the slippage happens, or you, you don't have control of that anymore. And not, it's not just, I'm not saying that the staff is taking advantage of it, but this, the council wants it both ways. We want, we want to have it nice and tidy, we don't, tidy, and we don't want to have to think about it, but we also want to have all this control over the budget. We want it to be accurate, and no fluff, and all this stuff, you know, so I guess I would prefer going down to a more bare bones budget, and having a formal request for anything that goes outside of, whether it's small tools, and hey, we've hit our $1,500 in May, but we still need to buy whatever, well, let's transfer money in from the general fund. You know, instead of having all that money all, all already allocated, and maybe, maybe Carla can speak to that, if that's, if, if that would work or not, but.
There may be a little bit of hybrid of what you've requested there, and maybe it is, at the time that a department wants to go over, they- they go to Ms. Anderson, Mr. Murphy and say, I'm heading over here. Do we have some extra in one of the other areas that that can be brought together? Basically what we're doing now, but with some measure of control to say, we're going to make them come to, at the staff level and say, we're going over here. Can we find savings to make that happen?
I guess from my perspective, we've heard a lot of, or many times, well, we've got it, we can, we can get that in the budget. We can do that. And to me, when I hear that, I say, well, how all of a sudden, I thought we were, you know, tight with our budgets, all those type of things, and then all of a sudden we have the spare money. We don't even have to transfer it necessarily from the general funder, you know. And maybe we are, but we're just not calling it that or we're doing some whatever. But I guess I would favor maybe looking at it more bare bones or, I don't know. It's, that was my thought, my own contemplation after thinking about how do we, you know, to your point. Well, we're, we were just fending off all the overtime overages with, from wherever. Well, if we're going to increase that money, we got to shrink all those other ones. Otherwise you're double, you're double adding, you know. You're putting, you're adding in both columns and we don't want to do that because then our budget's really going to go up. So I guess it, it may require quite a bit more work and maybe, I don't know how much time we have, maybe it requires a zero budget process, you know, where you go, and maybe that's a next year thing or something. But, you know, maybe we start building these budgets from zero instead of building them from 2017, 18, you know. It's, it's not something that I think we should do every year, but it's definitely, it would be a good exercise. And I know we've talked a little about the zero budget process. And I think it can get, it can get a little bit overdone and people try to say, well, you should do that every year. You start from zero. Well, that's, that requires a ton of staff time and it, you know, it's a pretty intensive process. But I think if, it wouldn't be a terrible idea to do it once a decade. And maybe this year isn't the year to do it, but, you know, we should at least have it on our radar. If we're trying to cut any of that, trim any of that fat and make it a more realistic budget, I guess.
May I just comment on that? And those, those exercises have a benefit. I understand that. Where it gets a little bit, I'll say, interesting in a way is, and I think Reed gave a very good example of it here a little bit ago when he talked about the programming and those type of things. It really kind of depends on, when we do a zero-based budget, is as far as what is our end game? What, what, what level of service do we want to, do we want to do and what do we need to get there? I mean theoretically, if we want to keep the, the level of service that we're at now, you know, it could be looked at as a bit of an effort and futility because we kind of, we've had a longstanding practice in how we, how we fund this. I mean, you can look at the line, line items. But if we're looking at maybe a shift or prioritizing some of the things or seeing that maybe we can, you either want to add or cut back in area, I think that's, that's definitely a benefit. But a zero-based budget is somewhat, I don't want to say difficult, but it's, you kind of have to know what, what you want to see out of it. If it's, if it's just, can we do it and maintain these services? And by building on a zero-based budget, maybe will we find some areas of excess that we maybe don't need? Or that'll be my only comment on that. And I guess, I don't want to, I'll talk a little bit about the, actually, I haven't even spoken to Carla about this yet. I got a call here toward, at the end of the day from Keith from Water and Light. He said that when he was looking through this, I think he's out of town here now. He knew we had the meeting tonight here and he said that when they were looking at the Water and Light meeting, that he, they're, I said, take it for all it's worth, but they're anticipating that 2019 will be a larger year and that we'll see more of the franchise tax than what we've had. I know it's not just Water and Light where we get that from. There's some other ones. But he's saying as far as Water and Light, they're seeing, they're going to anticipate an increase. So we'll have to work with that and see how much of it, I mean, it's a $48,000 change what we have in here.
Yeah, and he did give me the original number that I put in. So it was some of the other franchises that had gone up and down too. So that's just not Water and Light.
Yeah. And going back, I did have a conversation with, with Jason and the Public Works. Yeah, he's, he's got that truck driver position in there. He's, he's looking at it. But he's, he's not 100% certain at this point that he's looking at filling that. And then the final comment I'll make on, on this, as far as the personnel cost, in my opinion, in the personnel cost, the real wild card in this, you know, taking the, the filling of those two positions aside and whatever, the real wild card is really what our unanticipated cost or the overtime costs in particular. And I know the Police Department, Chief Headland and I have been working with Terry here as well to, to look at some options, one potentially radical option, but to, to bring some of those overtime costs down. But you can do your best to estimate it, but until it's in practice, it's always, it is what it is. It's an estimate. So for me, I think the biggest area that we can really look to trim or where we can get the personnel costs is really bringing that overtime in and bring it down as much as possible. So those are my comments.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I guess the other thing, the other reason why I think we should be, I don't know if the right word is stingy, but look very conservatively at our budget is I don't think that our 3.5% decrease in LGA is going to be a one-year thing. I think hopefully, I mean, it's kind of, it's that, it's that good, or that good thing that you're doing that causes you a little bit of pain. And I think we need to look at a long-term trend of having that cut by 15% in two, over 10 years. You know, so that's, that's a big chunk when we, you know, when we think of how our revenue has been brought in. If we're, if we're increasing, you know, personnel at 7.5% and decreasing our LGA at 3%, it's not apples to apples because that's just part of our revenue. But it's right now, what, a third of our revenue about? You know, a little less than a third. So I just think we should have some sort of a plan in this budget. And that's part of the reason why in the past I've talked about five-year, 10-year outlooks is because that number I, I think is going to consistently go down because of our success. Now, that, some of that may be offset by increased property tax revenues. That, that should be the sum of the offset, but I don't think we're seeing that right now. So like I said, I, that's part of my reason for being a little bit stingier on what we're, how broad we want to go with our budget in this year because that'll compound against that decrease in LGA.
Mark, you talked about having extra dollars in certain areas. And, you know, like I said before, we have those volatile areas where utilities and fuel costs. And so we try to look at it, probably a three, four-year average on that. And, you know, some years we've actually come ahead because of the weather, because of the fuel costs. The other thing we did talk about, David and I, we talked about, for example, this year we budgeted pool interest because we didn't know about the sales tax for sure. And so Reed wanted underwater pump, vacuum pump. So that was $7,000. So we suggested that he buy it this year since there's that $21,000. I guess the other thing is that we could look at some of those things, those areas, and see if some of those small capital items could be purchased this year if it was okay with the group, where we know there'll be savings so that we don't have to increase the levy for next year. So an example would be, I know that Reed was looking for ATV and so was police. And, you know, maybe that would be a shared item they could have since it's used for baseball, which is three months of the year. And then maybe it could be housed at the police the rest of the year or something. And if that's okay with you, we could work on items like that, that we maybe take out of the 2019 budget. When you talk about extra items or money available, we have to also remember that departments have until December 31st to spend that money. Even though you might have that money now, they may have a plan to spend that in November or in December. So it'd be difficult to say we have extra money here and there at this time. But we, you know, could work with the departments, and which I've done in other areas, like are you planning on doing the carpet this year, Charlotte? Because we know there's needs in fire for roofing or something. So we do some of that. We could be encouraged to do more of that, to look at what we have this year left in the budget that we might possibly have for savings since we are looking at just coming out equal between revenue and expenses, so.
And I guess my thinking is, is, you know, you take the, the micro buffers and you expand that to the general fund where it's one big buffer. I don't, I'm not anticipating, you know, you cut it, cut it, cut it till now all of a sudden we're going to dip into our fund balance to pay for everything. But we've been making it, you know, we haven't been dipping into our reserve. So you could take that, that amount and put that, if you think that it's going to be over or whatever, you know, you could take our bottom lines and try to get to that, even if it meant putting some money back, having a line item for fund balance. But if you reduce all those other things, then you're just putting money into your general fund and allocating it back to wherever it needs to go. You know, instead of having tons of little micro buffers or, I don't know.
And I don't really look at it as a buffer. We look at what, what did you spend last year? What did you spend the year before? And so we kind of look at, okay, we have to make sure you have that amount. For example, we had some savings in communications. And so I, for example, I think Reed sent me a change on it, wasn't as much as what it was for the last three years. So I gave him a call while we, Corey's looked at lines that cost us money that we don't need anymore. So we actually put that one down. So we do look at line items that way. I guess when we look at the CAFR, we're with 1% on expenses, 1% in revenue. And I don't know how more fine-tuned we can maybe get that because that is a pretty small percentage. So I'm not real comfortable unless each department says, I can cut 5% in this area, this area, this area. I don't think David and I can say, we can save that just off the top somewhere.
And I think what's, what's, I'm not saying, what's maybe saved us in the last few years, last couple of years when we, when our expenses have gone up is that our revenues have also gone up more than what we anticipated. So that's absorbed some of the costs or some of the, I guess, what the difference would have been. I admit that trend might continue, you know, I guess it's been kind of looking that way. But the, the last few years when we've, when we've gone over, our expenses, our revenue has also gone up unanticipatedly as well.
And I guess my point, I think I agree with your point about the 1% year-over-year on expenses or revenues. That's exactly what I would still want to see. But I would do, I would make those adjustments at the general fund level and, or cut the, cut the, the department level stuff back and add to the general fund. And I guess part of that goes to your point is, so say, say expenses go up and in the past we've had revenues go up alongside it, so it hasn't been a big problem. But what happens if revenues don't go up and we've already budgeted expenditures up? We have little control over the budget going backwards. We, you know, you can always spend the money and then we just spend it into, into thing. I think this gives us more opportunity to say no.
I see your point.
You know what's going to happen is that somewhere along the way, this group is going to set a top dollar limit of what we're going to spend for the year. And then folks are going to have to find a way to spend inside of that top dollar limit. That's really where this whole thing is going to end up. And whether that should be done between department heads, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Murphy, or whether that should be done by us saying, you know, the cemetery can cut its expenses in half. And the, you know, if that's what you want for us, for us to do is to break down each department and then look even inside of there and start saving hundreds here and thousands there, you know what, I'm sure we're all willing to do that. Yet some of that can be worked out at a staff level, to our city administrator, to our finance director, operating in the parameters that we set forth as for how much we're willing to see that levy go up. So I guess it's kind of a question tucked in there. How much do you want us as a city council to start to parse down your individual department budgets and say, oh, you can't have that, you can have that, you can? Or are you looking for the kind of leadership that says, look, this is what we're going to have to spend, see if you can figure it out at a staff level with our top staff, with all our department heads, everybody that we have?
And that's fine. I think that's what Mr. Vedder's brought up in the past is, we should give the, if, if we want to do it just the bottom line, let's give them a number and tell them we hit it, you know, and that's, I'm fine with that too. But it seems like we've kind of backed into our number too many times.
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to be more in that direction. And then, so there is a top number. There will be a top number that we feel that is suitable to pass along to our residents. Okay, and that's going to define everything that we do. The question then comes, to get to that number, do you want to handle it mainly at a staff level? Or do you want us to sit and parse your budget department by department around this table?
I guess I would answer that it depends on what that top number is.
Ask yourself.
Okay, then, then I would say the council, because we're going to have to, we're going to have to prioritize what our, what our services are. It really, I guess my response to that, it really depends on how close it is to what is being proposed.
Hey, we're going to tell you to cut eight or nine percent on it. Don't fall over. I'm just giving you an example.
You mean, you mean lower it or cutting it to 8%?
Lowering it. Let's say it's six, five or six percent. Let's say that that's the number we're at.
That we're going to lower, that we're going to levy 8% less than last year?
I'm just throwing the number at you. I mean, just saying that, let's just say that's where we're at. I mean, is it even a thousand mile you can get there though?
You're saying you're proposing to decrease the levy by 8% just hypothetically?
No, from where we're at now, proposing to run it.
So.
Oh, okay, so going from 14 to five or six.
Five.
I mean, is that, is it even possible to get there with what we have personnel cost?
And lost LGA.
Right, and that's why we're at 14.
I'd have to double check. I would say at that number, we would probably have to cut personnel and not, and not just cutting the ones that are being added.
I mean, that's why I'm asking the question. I mean, so I mean, let's say our realistic number is 8%. You know, are we going to find, are we backing into the number again and go, okay, we don't want to lose personnel?
I would be more comfortable with that one at staff level with maybe some direction from council, but yeah, I'd be more comfortable with that.
Just to get the number because we're all going to sit and look at each other and go, well, do we realize anything to you? I mean, are we going to give you a number that we have to be at or, I mean?
Yeah. Well, yeah, and I guess, I guess it would be, I guess if the, if the council's okay with it, my first question would be is, what are your thoughts about the, the park position and the truck driver? Is that something that we feel is needed and would be beneficial? Again, I'll pick on Reed here with, with the Park Department, you know, as he said in there, as far as what he would like to, the direction he would like to see his department go. Is that, if that's something that's valuable or you feel that's worthwhile, you know, that's going to be a portion right there, you know, we might have to look at something else.
This truck position, was that filled during last winter season? Or when's the last time that position was filled? time that position was filled?
Terry, can you answer that?
That line item, I think it's been in there for quite a few budget cycles.
As vacant?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been, yeah.
Right.
So no, what, yeah, I.
Just as, I didn't know if it was recent, because I moved around in the department or I just wanted to make sure.
No, yeah, it's, it's been a couple of years. At lea, you say at least two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And somewhere here, we have to deliver value proposition to our residents. Right? We have to some way demonstrate to them that any increase in taxation, it carries as a value to them. And that's for each one of us to decide, but it's also for every one of our residents to decide. And if we have to show up in the local coffee shops and here and there, they'll give us all the feedback we need.
Clarence?
Thank you. I always struggle with budgets because it seems like we're always just holding status quo, that we need to increase to meet salary increases and this is what we need just to do what we did last year. And that really bothers me. I'd like to see a budget process and to Reed's benefit, he comes in and says, if I have this new position, I can do this, this, and this, and this. And that's what I want to see out of departments. How, how, because we increase your budget, how are you going to provide more services to us as citizens? And solidify your budget that way. And then I'd have a better feeling or a better gut to say, okay, yeah, I can, I can support an increase in the budget then. To just come in and say, here's what we need status quo, I have a real problem with it. I want to have tangible items. The other piece that we can't have is the county not giving us where our values are at, because we can sit here and say, well, we want an 8% increase in the levy, when in reality that might be a 1% decrease to all of our, our citizens just because property values have gone up or new property has come on. So it's, it's hard for us without that county piece to be able to finish this budget either. So as far as in September, I think when we have to have our initial one, you do it high, you know, 20% increase, knowing that it's going to get cars back once we get county figures.
Because you can only, you can only go down, you can't go up.
Yep.
And to the mayor's point about, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
To the mayor's point about priorities and homework, maybe a good idea would be to, because I agree, you know, budgets are at the policy level, especially a statement of priorities. Maybe it would be a good homework assignment for everybody to go down and if staff would put together, you know, this is 100% of budget, this is what each department spends now, how would you change that if your priorities, you know, if police is 20% and fires 8%, I'm just throwing numbers out, 8%? Would you like to see fire at 10%? And, and that would give a weight to our priorities. Now, it doesn't, it wouldn't be a very, it wouldn't be a precise tool for budgeting because obviously there's internal things that push and pull from year to year, you know, in that budget. But at least it would give staff some of, some idea of where council priorities are, if, if that makes sense. You know, I don't know. Because I, I think we're headed down that route where we're going to set a number and we're going to ask staff to say, okay, we got to hit it, but I've been here for 30 years and I say my department's not going to get cut, yours is, and they're trying to guess at what the city's priorities are. If, if we can give some sort of tangible number to what our priorities are, that would give them some, some direction. And I don't know if you do that and average it, or I don't know if you, I don't know, maybe there's a better tool for doing that in your administrator toolbox.
Well, I guess one thing I will say is, as far as turf protection, I guess I'll call it is, with the departments and the department heads here, of the cities that I have been involved in and the cities that I've been, I'm aware of and the administrators that I speak to, I am very, very impressed. I really like working with these department heads here because I, this is probably the best city that I have encountered with as far as the lack of, of turf protection and the willingness to work together. And when we have our department head meetings and we do talk about this where we have to pare back some in that, I have never seen department heads offer up something before so that another department could keep something, and I've seen that here. So I, I will say that as far as that, I'm, I'm very, very impressed. But yeah, as far as what percentage of the budgets that they make, yeah, we can, I think we, we have that information already as far as what, what percentage is police department, what percentage is, is fire department, you know.
Unless the police and the fire together, but public safety.
And as you try to break this stuff out in your mind, you can think per department and then you can think capital versus current expenditures, which are more the people, right? And there would be a way to basically put off capital purchases, but then you have to pay the piper down the road. So that's not real savings. You know, suspending maintenance or holding off unnecessary capital purchases isn't real savings, because you're going to have to catch that up on the backside.
Carla, did you have something to add? Did I skip you? I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just thought if you, you know, when you're looking at this, the sheet with the 2018 levy and the changes, you know, if you didn't put in that park and rec and the public works and you subtract it, it's about 11%. So it's kind of like Clarence said, you know, decide to go high, see where the taxes come in, and then we make our adjustments just like what you did last year. I mean, because last year when we went from 10 to eight and a half, most of the properties was a $12 decrease. So, you know, we have to decide for that $12, are people willing to pay for those services or not or whatever? But I guess to me, I would just soon say this is close to the number we're looking at. We still can look at ways to say we can, David and I can look at things we haven't spent money on, check with departments that, no, I don't need that, I'm postponing that till next year, and maybe come back with a list of purchases we could do this year. And that might get some of our, like even the capital down. And we also will check on that, the replodding, plodding of the services, where we can get that out of.
Yeah, as far as, yeah, that was the direction that was given and I, I had our intern get some feedback from other cities as far as streamlining, asking the, the staff and the employees as far as streamlining. We've got some interesting leads on that and that's, I think, something that I will be moving forward with. It definitely can't hurt.
I think things like we talked like last week was, you know, with Chief Halden, you know, maybe different hours, you know, just different things that, different personnel that would change, maybe keep going down that road, you know?
And, and we, we did look at that and we do have, that's what, both Terry, the chief and I and Carla have spent some, had some considerable time since last week looking at that. Yeah, it's, you can do the best to predict it, but until you get it into practice and you see it, it's, it's, I will say it looks promising.
Just a reminder, though, that we have one work session left before we want to make our decision, unless we push back.
Well, for the preliminary, but we can always.
Yeah, for the preliminary, just so that everybody really puts that timeline back in there, that, you know, September 18th is a regular council session that we plan on setting our levy.
I think truly everybody's mind right now is that we're going to set it high anyway and then go from there. So I mean, so it, I mean, as long as everybody knows that, if they're watching and listening and reporting, when we set something, we have to set it, but we always can go down. So.
Thank you. The other side, talking about revenues, you know, Mayor brought up thinking about both sides of ledger. We had a quick discussion about get, you know, liquidating some property and, you know, are we interested in doing that and having that as a priority? Now, I don't know if a year is adequate time to, for a budget, like to say, we want to sell this property, something like the infill building, say we want to get rid of the infill Could we put that in our budget as a, a number and have that as a priority? Again, that gets back to the priorities, what do we want? I get a little bit leery about, I sit on MPO, so we do this all the time where we put a budget number in our budget and it seems like the numbers always come in like a dollar less than what the, the budgeted amount is or whatever. But, so I get a little, a little leery about putting a budgeted amount in there, but I think, on the other hand, it does incent us to actively move something like that if we are serious about doing it or want to do it. I think there's revenue side on that, there's also probably some cost savings to doing something like that. You know, the mayor and I talked about it, I thought it was something a lot of people have talked about for a long time. So that's an option. I guess another revenue, potential revenue thing, but it comes with some cost, I've brought it up before, is consolidating, consolidating some of the office space in City Hall, becoming more efficient so that we have more to rent out or lease, I guess, to, I would, my first option would be additional county or state services. And that could be a, another small revenue gain there too. It's not going to, it's not going to give us, you know, a tax cut or anything like that, but it's just little things that can both add service and in the long run be a revenue generator itself or whatever. So I would, I know.
I do have more information on that. We, we are working on that. We have what the estimated rental costs are. The issue we're running into on that particular aspect is trying to get a somewhat respectable estimate on what the remodel cost would be to add that space. That's where I'm, where I'm at right now.
Is that something that would be, that we could budget for, for 2019? Or is that something that we need to have further discussion?
I think we need to have further discussion on that.
And then budget for 20 or?
I'd say for 20, it would be, would work, and I don't want to get too far into this here, but, but the issue that we're really running into as far as trying to get a, a somewhat accurate estimate for that cost is the, the plumbing and, the plumbing and heating, the electrical, those type of things, how that would need to be reworked to add that space and how big of a project that would be.
It isn't adding space, it's optimizing space.
Well, optimizing space, yes. Adding usable space.
You're right. And I guess, so just to clarify, I'm saying reorganize the offices, office space in City Hall to better or more efficiently house the city and possibly water and light staff and which would free up, I believe, a ton of space that we could use for rental or leasing to county or state agencies. So, but like I said, if it's, if it's a two-year thing, then maybe we should look at it that, but.
It's, it's looking, it'll be a, a major undertaking as far as to, to really to kind of get that defined so that, they said particularly the heating and the cooling is the, is the big issue.
But we should have a discussion then on if we're willing to aggressively liquidate some property.
Of my question, if I'm understanding, let's say we sell a building for XYZ dollar mount, because I'm not going to say a dollar mount, because it was, ooh.
That's your job.
You don't want to do it.
Let's say that XYZ dollar mount, you saying that that portion will be withheld from the budget to knowing that we'd sell that property for that dollar mount and go back into that fund? I mean, is that what you're saying?
I'm just saying if you wanted to put a placeholder in for, say it's $100,000, put a placeholder in for, you know, other financing sources or whatever, what other.
So we'd have, we'd have, if we did sell for the $100,000, it'd be short $100,000 in the budget?
That's, that's, the reason I would put it in the budget is it gives us an incentive to try to.
No, I just want to make sure.
To actively sell it. Now, you could go the other way and just say we want to do it and then it's gravy if you do sell it, but I don't know, it's, it's one or the other. But we should have a, it, like I said, budgets are priorities and if we put it in our budget, then it becomes a priority.
And if we did sell an asset, I'm sorry, if someone else had their hand up, if we did sell an asset, I'd hope that those funds could be set aside for also an unusual purchase, like some transportation infrastructure that was a one-time kind of a thing. You, you wouldn't want to put it into your annual budget because now next year you're going to have to find a replacement for that.
And about $25,000.
But if there was an unusual expenditure that you had identified, it should be good to apply it to that.
Again, I don't want to be the doomsayer here or whatever, but I guess as far as, let's just make an assumption that we, let's say the infill building for, for example, and you, and we can sell it and use those funds for whatever, it's not tied to anything with the EDA or whatever, we'd have to check that out. But just say, assume we could sell it and it'd be free and clear, we can do whatever we want with that particular cash. You could certainly look at doing that as far as the, changing the budget. I will tell you now, though, my recommendation as administrator would be is if we sell those, any of those type of assets, I would recommend that we put that into a longer-term capital improvement fund because we have some, some very glaring needs coming up, particularly our ice arenas and those type of things that we're going to need a funding sources also. If we would sell something like that, I would, I would recommend we do that before we would, that's just my two cents.
That's basically what I said also.
Okay.
I don't think you said it better. Anyway, we had some good discussion on this. Do you want anything else to miss right now? Because I don't know, we're not going to set, we're not finalizing anything, we're not, we're just having a discussion.
I think we've got some more information and we'll bring it back at the next work session.
I, I think, hopefully you all heard, whether, whatever the number ends up being, this has to be worked down from where we are, right? You get that? It's going to have to be worked down from where we are. So if you want us to, again, go back through and parse every department and roll up our sleeves, great. If that can happen at a staff level, great, but probably start it sooner than later, because if we're under the gun at, you know, December 25th, then it gets like, you don't make your best decisions in that scenario. So you're going to want to work the number down sooner than later.
I'll just say, I have been, not in this city, but I have been at a special meeting on December 29th that they had to call special to, to get the final budget there. Before we head out, two things. One is I have been notified by the state of Minnesota, the Department of Motor Vehicles, that our lease with them for the part out there at the parks and rec shop where they do their testing out there, our lease is coming up or actually is up. And so they would like to renew that with us. So if you could think about that real quick, if there's anything you'd like, I would recommend that we just continue on with the lease that we have, but think about it and let me know. I'll have to bring that forward. And the other thing I was going to bring up is tonight is Luke's last meeting here with us as a, as an intern. His internship has come to an end, so he will be in tomorrow and, and after that, he will be on to bigger and better things.
Do we give him an applause?
Sure.
Good to have you here.
I appreciate it. Anybody else have anything?
Could I toss in one more thing? And this is for Megan. This is for, this is for Megan. I was asked to meet with some representatives of Sacred Heart prior to this meeting and they are looking for a way to streamline the purchase of that parcel where the old water tower was. And they asked if they would sign a hold harmless agreement to the city that any unforeseen material found on that site, that they would assume all responsibility for that. And Mr. Galstead, if you would be so kind as to check and see if that would be binding for them if they signed a hold harmless agreement for all unforeseen underground whatevers. And if that would be, then perhaps that could come to our next regular council meeting and streamline the purchase. Does that make sense to everybody? Mr. Galstead?
Oh, I mean, I have no problem looking into it like I, we had kind of briefly discussed beforehand. I'm not sure what their attorney's going to say about it, but I can look at it.
Please.
Andrew, do you have something to go to the order?
Yes, I'd like.
Yes, I'd like you to invite President Bono of the Tech School, the first work session in October. The enrollment is up very substantially and there's some interesting statistics. He, he served his first meeting today to be on the library board and he fit like a glove and Charlotte can add to it. Library board is, is full and one thing by his appointment, it shows that we're very serious at keeping a quality library in our city. And I think on September 15th, we're going to have a good meeting at the Tech School.
All right, entertaining motion adjourned.
I'll move.
By Better, second by Reece, all in favor, say aye. Full, same sign.
Thank you.
So Carla, what happened?
I love the Sacred Heart thing. Sacred Heart wants to sign a waiver for that so they don't have to do that testing.